What's up everybody, John Henry, both sides of the conversation today. We are out in community today. We are at D10 for the Community Public Safety Meeting with District Attorney DA Jenkins and Police Chief Bill Scott.
Over the years, there's been different challenges to bring community together with law enforcement DA.
We know there are a lot of things that happen and never get reported that people have to live with every day, day in and day out.
It's very important to have these conversations. We have two of the most important leaders when it comes to public safety here tonight, and we want to definitely listen to some of the things that's happening, take questions, and we're going to work together as we continue to build our relationship in our community, not only just the issues here in D10, but citywide issues that's impacting the city. We know on the news, there's all kinds of stories, all kinds of things happening. It's great to have our two leaders here to talk about it, but one of the things tonight, we just really want to go over the safety, some of the community standard rules. I run a podcast, I run some of the community meetings, and I always want to put standards out there because we are trying to change the narrative in our community. And we know over the years, there's been different challenges to bring community together with law enforcement DA, and we just want to be respectful because we have an opportunity as adults of the community and community leaders to lead by example. And today, that's what I would like to see, all of us just to continue to think about it as we move along, because it's a lot of adulting that needs to happen. I always say, the adults in our community sometimes are the problem where our young people are deteriorating off and doing things. So we want to lead by example, and we want to be respectful of each other. We don't want to troll people, make comments, outbursts. We want to be leaders, and we want to be adults and make sure that we represent Bayview, we represent our community. So when folks come here, some of the biases and some of the stereotypes that they place on this community can't change. We can't come together and we can't have difficult conversations with respect and make some change in our community. So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the DA. We're going to start off and just let everybody know, this is a citywide conversation, but it is a conversation that's impacting Bayview. This is led by the DA's office in partnership with SFPD. And so with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to DA Jenkins.
Hi. Okay, can you guys hear me in the system? Okay, so good evening. Yes, we wanted to, we've been on a journey, the chief and I, throughout the city, trying to make sure that in every district, we make ourselves available to the communities there to ask us questions about the work we're doing, how we're doing it, what our priorities are. We want to hear from the community about what you want our priorities to be. And so that is really why we're here, is to have that conversation. As you know, I kind of dropped into politics here in San Francisco, out of the sky, I like to say, out of nowhere. Grew up in the East Bay, over the bridge, went to high school, you know, grew up my whole life over there, went to Cal, so stayed around for undergrad. And now I'm raising my two kids in San Francisco, and they're seven and three, and just want to do this work the right way. I started off at the San Francisco DA's office nine years ago. I had been in corporate law for a while, was not satisfied with what I was doing, and decided that I wanted to enter prosecution. I started actually before I got to the DA's office. I worked on a murder case at the Public Defender's Office here. And because of course, people in community come to you and say, "Why on earth would you want to be a prosecutor? You're black." And I said, "You know, I feel like we need to be people in the position to make fair decisions on how these cases proceed." And they're like, "No, no, no, you need to be a defense lawyer. Give it a try." And so I worked in that office for about three months on a murder case. It was in trial. And every day, I came to court, really working hard for our client. And that case involved the murder of a 25-year-old black man. And his father sat in the front row of that courtroom each and every day of that trial. And I too had just buried my own son, who was an infant, not even a year before I was in this courtroom working on that case. And so I did the defense for that client to the fullest, but at the end, I had to really sit down and figure out what I wanted to do, right? Was that right for me, or did I truly want to be a prosecutor? And the mother in me, who had lost my own child, felt the connection to that father and said, "I want to one day be the voice for the parents who have lost theirs too." And so that's really what pushed me into prosecution nine years ago. Of course, you don't start off in homicide, you start off in misdemeanors. So I started off in misdemeanors, went to felonies, was the hate crimes prosecutor, did a stint in our sex assault unit, and then ultimately the last year and a half in our homicide unit, representing those buried parents who had buried theirs. And so when I talk about the way we need to do this work, I don't do it out of a book. I don't do it out of what some professor taught me. I do it out of what I would want for my people. And that means not defaulting to what we have always done historically in prosecution. It means being thoughtful in each and every case to see what is the right form of consequence for each person, knowing when to look for certain things about, right? Was the investigation done correctly? You know, has everything along this path been done right to make sure that we promote justice in our cases? Having to be a voice for victims though, because I think we often ignore, we often, right, are subject to the stereotype that black people are the defendants, and that's all we ever hear, is you're the one who's accused, but we forget how many of us are victims in this system. And quite frankly, this zip code where we are tonight gives us the most victims that we serve in our office, and nobody ever talks about that. And so I want my office to be a voice for the victims in this community, who oftentimes deal with some of the most serious crimes that we prosecute. And so that is what I'm trying to do, is do this the right way, be that voice, so that if something happens, if your son gets shot, if your son gets murdered, if your house gets broken into, whatever it is, that we make sure your rights are observed in the criminal justice system. The last thing I want to say is that a part of what informs how I do this work is the fact that when I would come to work, I used to call it "black people's problems," I would come in and there were times that I would see people that I knew from across the bay come through in orange in the courtroom, "Hey, what's up? Oh, nice to see you, okay." I had to sit for over a year with the person who sat in an open office setting for a while, and the person who sat across from me had a box on his shelf with my cousin's name on it for over a year. And so a lot of what informs how I do this is because it deeply impacts, right, the people that I know personally, and why, if I would want my loved ones to be treated fairly, I have to make sure that other people's loved ones are treated fairly too. And so I get the rap of being this tough-on-crime, anti-reform prosecutor, and so one thing that it's important for me to say in this community is that that might be what they are trying to label me as, and yes, I believe in accountability, but what I most believe in is a fair system of justice in our criminal justice system here in San Francisco, and that's what my goal is, as I work alongside this gentleman here. Thank you.
DA Jenkins, and with that being said, because she did talk about the crime in this community, I want to introduce Police Chief Scott to talk about some of the priorities and resources, some of the things that they're trying to do here in Bayview, as well as citywide. So with that being said, welcome Chief Scott.
Thank you, thank you, John Henry. And first of all, thank you for being here. Happy holidays, everybody. Can you all read that? Okay, sir. Hold the mic down. So I will start off by just saying, it's really an honor to be here alongside our district attorney, because the working relationship between her and me, it has to work. And I think we share a lot of the same, probably most of the same values in terms of how we see the criminal justice system. We have a job to do, you know, when people are victimized, when people commit crimes, we have a job to do, and part of that job is to try to solve those crimes and hold people accountable. But the other side of the equation is, we want to do the job the right way, you know, and treat people the way we want to be treated, the way we want our family to be treated. And I, we've had enough conversations to know that we both truly believe in that. That drives how we do what we do. And I know we don't always get it perfect. I've been in enough meetings with enough people in this room to know that, you know, we still got a lot of work to do. We still have a lot of work to do. But I will say, we made some tremendous strides, and we continue to try to strive forward to do the job the right way, because as we address crime, we also have to work with the people that we serve, and work with them in a way where we can talk, we can connect, we can have the honest conversations about critical incidents, officer ball shootings, and we may not agree on every issue, but we have to have those conversations, and you all have to hear, and we have to hear, and we have to listen. So that's a part of why we're here. You know, I'm going to talk a lot about crime and where we think we are, but statistics that we have do not tell the whole story, because we know there are a lot of things that happen and never get reported that people have to live with every day, day in and day out. So we want to talk about those things too. We also want to talk about how we police. Are we policing to your expectations? Are we doing the things that we need to do, where you believe that this police department's working in your best interest? And fair and just, man? That is really important to me as chief of police, it's really important to this department, and I believe it's really important to the city. So I just want to end my fight on, do I still have a minute?
You still have a minute.
Okay. Then there was a second. You're going to cut me off in three minutes. I want to bring this up now, because this, I think, is really important, something that the DA and I have evolved upon in terms of how we police and having a real understanding about policing. I've been doing this for over 30 years now, 34 years to be exact, and part of what we are trying to do with the San Francisco Police Department and its members is really connect and understand where people are coming from, of all communities, and communities of color, particularly African-American communities. We have taken officers and kind of gone back to the civil rights era, so officers can understand some of what drives how people feel about police officers, not just SFPD, but police officers in general. The DA has been on those trips with us, there are people in this room that have been on those trips with us, because we have invited community members, and we sit down and we have some really difficult, deep conversations about those issues, understanding what happened in 1960 and how that still plays today. And I got to say, there are people in this room that actually got us started, I believe there's it, so that helped us get this program off the ground. And these are the types of things that we want to do with you all, because how we police really is going to determine how successful we can be in terms of public safety. And it's not just about putting people in jail, it's about taking care of victims, it's about understanding how what we do impacts the communities we serve, whether it's the right thing to do or not the right thing to do. When we make an arrest, and we pull somebody out of a household, that has an impact. And we need to understand that and try to bring the right people into the equation, so the people who are left to deal with the circumstances, to get through that moment. And part of policing is understanding the bigger picture, not just tops of problems and not just, you know, the things that we have to do day to day, but we need to understand how we impact people, so we can get the right people at the table to make this city not only a safe city, but a city that can heal from when we do have these tragic things that happen. So I'll stop there, because I know we're going to go into some detail about what all that means, but thank you all for being here, thanks for having us here, and back to you.
Thank you, Chief Scott and DA Jenkins. That was the introduction, now we're going to get into some play-by-play questions for the DA and Chief Scott, but before we get there, we're also going to get some cards out. If you have questions tonight that you would like to ask, we ask that you put it on these cards, so if you have a question tonight that you want to ask, please raise your hand, so that we can get it around while we get through these questions. Again, we have a hard stop at 7:30, so we're going to move this fast, I'm asking the panel to get through these questions. We'll go and start off with our citywide questions, and then we're going to, and then we're going to get into some of the Bayview specific questions and concerns, and again, we're going to be working to find out how can we intentionally really bring these questions outside of, after this meeting, how we could connect, because we want every person here to have a voice, we want to make sure that everybody's concerns are met, and we're going to work closely to figure out for the next town meeting, because I know some people say, "Well, we came today and we need to have a lot of the questions and things of that nature." We will work to be better, to make sure that everybody's questions get answered, and we'll work through the community partners, as well as some of the city folks, to make sure that our community is heard. So we'll start off with the first, she's coming, she's going to do this one second. So we're going to start off with the first question, the citywide question for DA Jenkins. DA Jenkins, from day one, you said your top priority was to end the existence of open-air drug markets. What initiatives have your office undertaken during the first year as district attorney to address the drug cases in the city? What is the progress in the reports of residents here who can hear tonight, where are we at? And then what are the main barriers holding up the drug dealers accountable here in the city?
So as you guys have probably heard, I talk a lot on this particular issue. The landscape has changed down in the Tenderloin, and most people in the Tenderloin will tell you it's 10 times worse than what it's ever been as far as drug dealing. And when I took over, I think the chief would be fair to say, there are about 30, 40 drug dealers on multiple blocks in the Tenderloin at a time. And so for me, it meant we have to have accountability for what's going on, especially as we have two people dying a day downtown of overdose. And what people don't talk about is who's dying, because the largest percentage of those dying are black of overdose. And so it is a situation that must be dealt with. And so to that end, when I came in, I said, "Look, first of all, we need to be looking at what appropriate consequences are for these people. How many cases do they have?" So many of them have been allowed to revolve in and out of the courthouse, pick up not one arrest, but two, three, four, even five arrests, where we have five open cases for these folks who yet were still out. When has that ever been acceptable? And it shouldn't be. And so that meant pulling plea deals that the prior administration had put on the table for these people, most of which were misdemeanor plea deals for people dealing with fentanyl who had multiple open cases. It meant partnering with SFPD to a greater degree, their narcotics unit, to make sure that they understood what types of evidence we need now. It's a different climate out there. People are saying they're being forced to sell drugs against their will, which there's no evidence of, but that meant we had to dig deeper to collect evidence to dispute that. What text messages are they sending with their suppliers to get their phones, making sure that SFPD is interviewing these folks at the time of their arrest? Just a lot of refinement to the investigative process. And we've now been working with the feds more closely to make sure that they are a part of these operations as well, to make sure that they have more cases in their office, so that people really understand that drug dealing, particularly of fentanyl, is not going to be acceptable in San Francisco anymore, that you cannot torment neighborhoods that have children in them, trying to live, trying to go to school by selling fentanyl and killing you each and every day. I hear a lot about, "Oh, are you restoring the war on drugs?" Absolutely not. First of all, this is nothing like crack. As I said, people a day dying. It's the most lethal drug we've ever seen on our markets. And nobody's asking for enhanced penalties, the way we saw with crack versus cocaine. This is about using the laws we have on the books right now, just to make sure that there's accountability in this space. One of the hurdles and challenges that I've been talking about very publicly are the judges. I don't think the courthouse should be a revolving door for repeat offenders. If you're going to continue to demonstrate that you won't follow the law and continue to sell this substance, then we need to make sure that you sit down and take a timeout for a second while we figure out what the resolution in your case should be. And so that has been a big effort of mine, but the judges have felt that apparently fentanyl isn't as dangerous as we all know it is, and these folks have been allowed to continue to cycle out of the system, sometimes hours after they've been arrested. And so I've been very vocal on this issue, because I think the public needs to know the truth of what I'm up against, what we're up against, because it's unacceptable. In no other realm would anybody be allowed to be arrested four times for the same crime and be permitted to get back out right away to do it again. And so we're working hard on that. We filed over 350 detention motions in drug dealing cases out of 1,100. So we're being selective. This isn't just incarcerate everyone, this is the most prolific offenders of drug dealing, those who have been doing this again and again. We have filed 350 of those motions, 34 of them, if you can. So that tells you something. And most of those people go back, get back out and do it again, and we file another case, and we have to file another motion. So that's what, that's how I've been trying to deal with this and some of what we've been up against.
Some of your questions have been answered by Chief Scott or DA Jenkins, so I don't want you guys to come for me and be saying, "Hey, man, I'm about to go call you to answer my question." Okay, we'll get to the ones that's not on here, but we want to make sure everybody's voice is heard, but I've seen a number of the questions that have been addressed, and if you feel like your question wasn't answered, we'll revisit it, but I want to make sure that we get through everybody's question, and I want to make sure that we get out of here on time, okay? So one more question for both of you, and we'll make you kind of a one-two question. For DA Jenkins, what efforts have you made to address the property crimes in the cases, and are they a priority to your office? You know, sometimes the community is like a revolving door, people come in, come out, and they feel like maybe the prosecution isn't doing enough to keep these folks from reoffending. What are you doing to tackle that on property crimes?
So property crime obviously is really one of the most significant issues in San Francisco. You know, when we, obviously I'm going to step outside of Bayview community when I'm talking about violent crime being less of an issue in other areas of our city. Property crime overwhelmingly is what bothers most San Franciscans and affects most San Franciscans. And so I have come in and said, "Look, we can't treat it as though it's this low-level crime that's insignificant. The volume at which it's happening makes it have to be a priority." When we're talking 30,000, at one point in our city, we had 30,000 offenders, 30,000. And so we can't treat it as something that is insignificant and doesn't matter. And so for me, I've come in and I've said, like I was saying earlier, we have to be thoughtful. Each person, each offender, their situation, the facts of their case is unique. And so we have to look at their situation for what it is and determine, are you somebody whom we should say, "Okay, Judge, they can be back out while this case is open," or, "Judge, they've got a track record that says that doesn't work for them." Is this somebody who continues to victimize people even after we've given them a second chance, a third chance, et cetera? And are they somebody who is a prolific burglar in our city? So we have people who we know, functioning crews, they burglarize 10 cars a day, that's what they do as a job. We have to treat them differently than the one-off person who won a car first time. And so that's been what I've been really trying to instill in our lawyers, is be thoughtful, pay attention to the circumstances of that case, make sure that the outcome that you propose for that case is appropriate, make sure that you make public safety arguments that are appropriate for that situation, make sure judges know all of the facts that they need to know to render a decision on whether they keep somebody in at the outset of the case. But we very much recognize, and one thing for me is, when you don't have a lot and somebody takes what you have, it's more of a problem, right, than the Rolex that gets stolen from the person who can afford to go get another one. And I'm not saying that doesn't matter, it matters to them and we have to address it, but when you think about communities who can't afford to repair the window of my car, right? I grew up with my single mother, we could not, that would have set us back. You can't just go fix the problem. And so we have to make sure that these are priorities, because the way they impact certain people in certain communities is significant, even if it's something that seems small. And so that's why I've been trying to take it more seriously.
Thank you for that, because not only does it cost to get it fixed, because we in D10, you file an insurance claim, now you're paying 22% more to have insurance coverage. So it's very important that we take these issues serious, and we reach out to our community leaders and organizations who have resources for our young people. We got to make sure our young people have jobs and opportunities. We always talk about, we hold it out for the rainy day. Now is the rainy day, we need to support our community. All right, question for Chief Scott here. We're going to go quick, because we got two minutes, we give you two minutes for this one. This is the fight that will be the one you need to go fight. But we want you, we want you to address seriously as we come up to the holiday season for community, what does it look like for you all tackling some of the gun violence issues here in D10? You know, we deal with a lot of mental health, we're coming up, holidays, stressful time, folks are sometimes, you know, just going through difficult times, and you see an increase in gun violence. What is PD doing to support our things that they're putting in place to kind of combat some of the gun violence in our community?
Yeah, we, where is the question? Really, and the whole team, just stand up for a second, so, so this team is their professional staff at SFPD. We have, we have a gun violence initiative, reduction initiative, that they really help run and administrate, you know? There's a whole operational piece of that, thank you. But part of what they do, what we do as a community, as a city, is it's not just about, you know, investigating the crime and figuring out who shot who and trying to put somebody in jail. We're trying to get to people who we have determined are at risk of either shooting or being shot. That's really important, because we did the research, and it really came down to about a couple hundred people at that time, who were at the most risk. And a lot of, you know, what went into this is looking at some of the history, and a lot of the people have been involved in, you know, conflicts and things before, they've been incarcerated, been put in jail before for, you know, those type of crimes, but there are some things that were coming. So with that, what we try to do, Arturo was there taking the picture, SVIP and others, we try to get to people and the families before they get shot or shoot somebody. It's all about intervention. So we have this process that we call direct contact, where if they think that, you know, Bill Scott is at risk, we have SFPD lieutenant and the team that he works with, they'll go and make contact with that person, try to get them to a sit-down, and then we bring SVIP and others into these meetings, to try to get people on a different path. It's not about, you know, you're going to get shot, go to jail, it's not about that, it's about can we do something to help you? And if we can get the support network, the families in there, we get them in there too. So we've done almost 200 of those this year, I think 190 is the number. It's not a whole lot of people that are out shooting or being shot, and that's a good thing. So if we can focus on the people who need the help before we have to get to the DA and the police department and arrest them, that's the way we try to do this. In this area, the good thing is, we have been able, collectively, because it's not just the police department, it's all of us, shootings are down. That's a good thing, you know, it's like 14%, so I'll take any reduction in shooting. Murders are down in this area this year, so, you know, is it because of that alone? Maybe not, but we know that that helps, because we've started to see, once we got going shootings, we're going down. Last thing I'll say, because I know we only had two minutes. You know, part of what funded this, though, we got two grants, I think a $1.6 million grant and a $6.1 million grant. So we're going out to try to get the resources. And the grant allows us to hire people who are life coaches, people who can actually help, you know, not just us talking, saying, "We want to help you," actually have the people who can help, to try to get people on a different path, because it's not just about the criminal justice system to address this issue. We got to be the village that we say we are. So when people want help, we need to have the resources to help them get to a better place. So that's how we're addressing it, and it's working so far. We want to continue to do that.
All right, two minutes, not enough, all right. So I do want to bring these two questions, because I see four of them here, and you just kind of talked about resources, I want to bring it to both of your offices, because tonight we look around, and the young people aren't in the building. A lot of folks in here that are connected to the young people, so the main question is for, you know, the youth, the resources. What commitment, what resources does the DA's office and PD's office do to help support transitional age youth with resources to help deter some of the violence that's taking place? And, you know, how can the community also get engaged and know how to get some resources to help the young people in our community?
So I'm a DA that believes public safety starts before a crime is committed. The fewer victims we have, the better, right? It's not just prosecuting crime after it happens, it's putting people in a position not to be victims and not to be offenders. And right now, from my view, our office has never been involved really in any significant way or meaningful way in intervention and prevention work with our youth. We've been busy prosecuting and leaving it at that. And so when I took over, I said, "We have got..." And so when I took over, I said, we have got to build out what our intervention and prevention programming is going to look like. We have to occupy that space. Because again, if we can keep people out of this system as victims and offenders, we are all better off, right? And so to that end, Tiffany Sutton is sitting over here to my right. She is our chief of juvenile, but also our chief over our restorative justice programs. And she is who really helps me day in and day out craft out the intervention and prevention work that we're doing with our, with our kids, but also with our transitional age youth. And what we have been working on is giving, finding ways to give our kids hope, right? If I have no hope of being anything else, of being something productive, of being able to take care of myself, well then what do I have to lose by going to rob somebody? What do I have to lose by going in that store and taking what I want, right? Or shooting somebody? We have to instill hope in our kids that they can transcend what are sometimes some pretty tough circumstances. And that requires not just saying, okay, here's what you should be doing. We have to give them the tools and the resources to get there. And so what we have been working on are ways to bring our kids into our office space, expose them to different career paths. Doesn't have to just be lawyers. So many people think, well, if you come into the DA's office, then you must want to be a lawyer and then that's the only thing you're going to learn how to do. No, we have victim advocates, we have investigators, we have paralegals. We have IT support staff, we have a whole unit. We have data analysts, jobs that many kids even meet, didn't even know existed. And so we have to expose them to those careers, let them see people that look like them come from where they come from in those careers, and then give them the tools to be able to pursue those careers over a number of years, right? As they grow up. And so this past summer, we were able to bring in a class of teenagers into our office to do sort of that type of, give them that kind of exposure. We made sure, and it was hard work, Tiffany, thank you, to make sure that they got paid through Opportunities for All because nobody can afford to work for free. We've been really trying to extend our outreach. We're looking into trying to build out other avenues of outreach that we're going to do with our kids in other ways, not just come in for the summer and then we say, okay, see you later. We have to build out again that pathway where we stay in touch, where we do workshops with them on various different things, know your rights. If you're interested in a certain type of career, have a speaker come in and guide them through the testing that you might have to do, the processes. But where we continue to really just foster mentorship, and that's another thing that we're doing, is we're going to try to grow a mentorship program as well. But really try to impact our kids in a different way. The other thing that we're looking at is how we can go into the schools. Some of this is not necessarily the kids can always come to us, but how do we go to them and make ourselves available in the school district? We all know that there's a lot of things that shouldn't be happening, going on in our schools. A lot of violence going on in our schools. And we have to be able to penetrate those walls to be of assistance, not there as law enforcement per se, but to just come in and be a voice with our kids. And so that's what's really key for me, is if we can do so much more of that, if we can give our kids a bridge to further education, to workforce development, then they will see, I've got something I'm pursuing. I have a lot to lose if I go down this wrong path. And figuring out how we can also focus some of that attention on kids who are more at risk. It can't just be the high performers in our community who we bring in. It has to be that we're grabbing some of our kids who are teetering on that line or maybe have already been involved with the system.
All right, I want to be transparent with everybody. See, we'll go through all the cars. I didn't see nobody's car yet, but I just wanted to show you guys that we're going through this. She answered one of the questions, one of the comments was, you know, how do we get information for victim support services with survivors as well as families' victims? They have a table out there. So whoever wrote that question, the question was answered earlier, just step out in the hallway and get some information there. Another question was how do we, what are we doing for prevention for young people in this neighborhood? DA Jenkins just covered that. I want to be transparent, build in transparency, right? I want to make sure everybody gets their question down. All right, one of the questions here for Chief Scott. What are SFPD is doing about the open-air drug market in the Bayview between reverse and casada? After that, Chief Scott?
So let me say hi to Tiffany because I didn't see her come in her room. So when I did a plug for the whole gun violence prevention, Tiffany actually wrote the grant before she went back to the DA's office. But she's the reason that we got the seven. Thank you. Drug market in Bayview. So yeah, there are, there are some issues. The Bayview station, particularly the Bay Area that you mentioned, we get a lot of calls, complaints. And they, they put the resources there. We don't have the narcotics and the DMAC effort in the Bayview at this time. I'm hopeful that once we really get a handle on the tenement, that this model can be used wherever we have an issue. Thankfully, the open-air market here is not as bad as what we see in the tenement. So we don't want it to get that way. So basically, the Bayview station, they deploy. When we get those type of complaints, they go and do what they do, whether that's, you know, plane close operations or uniform or foot feet or bicycle. But we also have our community violence reduction team. And they mostly plane close, but they do a lot of operations. Now, when it goes to some of the other things that the drug market causes, which is violence, that's where the community violence reduction team, we call them CDRT, that's where they come to play because that's what they handle, all of the violence side of that. And so it's kind of a joint effort. It's a local issue in terms of the deployment for the open-air drug market in Bayview is handled by Bayview Station. And it's a matter of making sure of what I just mentioned, plus CDRT. And if we have to put more resources there, like other department sources, our motorcycle officers or our tactical unit, we do it based on what's going on. So at times, all those things are coming in play. And every now and then, you will see the Department Command Van parked in Bayview on Third Street. Usually it's associated with violence more than the drug market. But we have done that when these things lead to violence, which sometimes they often do. So that's kind of our strategy for Bayview.
Thank you, Chief Scott. Going through the cars, okay? There's some of these questions unanswered, but I'm just going to read them so everybody knows that we're actually reading your question. They talked about the vital stores, the small businesses, the Walgreens, what's the school? Some of the crime that's been happening with the retail stores. And they feel, we talked about it earlier, that these stores need to be open. They think that if we had a better PD presence, we talked about getting more officers in here with the resources, that deters folks. So we got that question. I just want to make sure if people ain't saying, I didn't read your question. Another question, the public safety is not limited to drugs and violence. We have a garbage issue in San Francisco and limited in D-10. People must be accountable for illegal dumping, illegal dumping that's happening in Bayview. Who's in charge of the camera system, reporting and files for the cameras in D-10?
So there was a bunch of questions. Which one do you want me to answer?
Let's start off, what can we do to hold folks accountable for illegal dumping? That's one thing. And then there's surveillance cameras that, you know, that we have, I need to talk about that's a very help deterrent. How are we using it and who's responsible for that?
So we do work really closely with Public Works. And they pick up a lot of things that are dumped in D-10. So Public Works is responsible. You know, if it gets to a point, just had this conversation today with some folks from the city, the mayor's office. Illegal dumping, those calls used to come to the police department, they don't come to the police department anymore. And this is one of the areas, after the George Floyd murder, there were a whole list of calls that people were saying, why are the police even going through these calls? That was one of the group's calls. So those calls actually get rounded to Public Works now. But if they need us there, because if it's something that, this has happened where their workers get attacked or whatever, we will be there. So they are responsible. But I'll say this though, because we've done cleanups in the Bayview with Public Works. And when we do them, and we will start back, we hadn't done one in about a year, but we've done several of them. Come join us, please. And we picked up a whole lot of garbage. I think the last one that I did, we were in Double Rock. And we picked up so much, you were there with us, right? We picked up so much garbage, we ran out of garbage bags. So I mean, that's, it's just, you know, it was the community, it was officers, Public Works, those things matter. But once we clean an area up, we got to try to keep it clean. So I think that's all of our responsibility and call it in. Public Works, they, those folks work very, very hard, but you got to call this stuff in and that's my ask. The reason that we did that cleanup, the last one, there was so much garbage in and around, not necessarily in the center of Double Rock, but although there was some, the outskirts, on the perimeter. I mean, it's just, if that were in any other neighborhood, another part of town, would we tolerate that? Would it be tolerated by anybody? I say that answer is no. I'm going to answer that so you don't have to. We need to have that same standard in this community. And I think it's incumbent upon all of us to pitch in and make sure that these things happen. So we'll continue to participate in the cleanups, but DPW is responsible for it, but we're partnered where we need to be.
All right, y'all, we got about 15 minutes left. You still got to stay. All right, the one that haven't been answered, what is the strategy to deal with dirt bikes and sideshows?
Let me start with sideshows. See, that one, we have a strategy that's working. Sideshows, the way we do sideshows is, when we have a sideshow, we call, basically, we call it stunt drive and response unit. We call officers all over the city. There's a lieutenant that works traffic company, he rallies or she rallies the officers, and they break up the sideshow. If they can arrest people, if it's an arrestable offense, they do. They can write tickets, they do. What we've done though, is when we have one, we try to get the camera footage. We've gone back and investigated. And if we have enough to impound the car, we impound the car after the fact. We've impounded, I think, 40 some cars since we started doing this, and the fees are heavy. So that's a deterrent. Dirt bikes, much, much harder. On the way over here, we saw a couple dirt bikes. And we don't have that figured out yet because it's, because it's a really hard thing to corral 200, 300 motorcycles or dirt bikes. Dirt bikes, they get on sidewalks and it's, you know, we don't chase motorcycles. They dart in and out between cars, and so it's a really hard thing. We just, honestly, we're trying to figure it out now. We catch what we can, but when they come in in mass, it makes it really, really hard for us to deal with. So we will, more to follow on that.
All right, it was a question for DA Jenkins. I kind of read through it and it was just basically saying, they heard you speak a few times, you stand on, you know, crime and fit and all use. And it was just saying be tough and fair. And I think she talked about lesser crimes being sustained on it. So I think that question is answered.
So I'd like to say, no, 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 I'd like to say all crime is illegal again in San Francisco. People tend to laugh at that one. We have to, like I said, we have to enforce our laws. I liken it to being a parent. I said, if I just go home every night and tell my kids, don't do that. Hey, my rule is, you know, you're not supposed to jump off the table. And I never do anything about it when they keep doing it. What do I expect to change, right? They're just going to keep doing it. And we've just gone too long with there being very little enforcement from my office and very, very few consequences on the table as things continue to spiral out of control. And so again, it's about being thoughtful, it's about being fair, proportional, right? Making sure you deal with lower level, you know, people who present a certain situation that's less serious, in a less serious manner than people who present with very serious circumstances. And so that's really what I'm trying to do.
And then lastly, because I know we got to get out of here. You know, someone wrote a couple of things and Chief Scott can answer. I just want to read, read the people's question. It was, what was the current citizen rate, is it up or down now? It's fit and all, we talked about that. So I think that's something that's already been addressed. Parking enforcement is dangerous. They're saying that parking traffic 231, will SFPD do anything about parking issues? Double parking and things of that nature. And then this last question, top political positions are filled by African-American DA Chief Mayor. Why are we still talking about race? I just want to tell, you guys can address it, but I'm just going to say this. We always talk about race because the most despairing folks in this city is always at the top of all the statistical list is black folks and brown folks. So it's always a race issue until we change the narrative of how we are impacted. So I'm not sure who wrote that, but we always want to talk about black and brown issues because when you look at all the statistical categories, we are the most impacted when it comes to those areas. So it's always an issue until the narrative we change. I'll let you go.
No, I just think certainly, you know, when I stand next to Mayor Breed and Chief Scott, I feel proud, of course. But just like I said, when Obama was elected, it doesn't mean discrimination and racism just walked out the door. We still very much have that around this country. And I think we tend to think that because San Francisco is diverse, right? We're in the Bay Area, that somehow we don't have it here, but we do. And so I think when we come into a space where, you know, we have a large population of a certain demographic of people, we have to address the realities that that demographic deals with. We know Bayview's not monolithic. It does have other ethnicities here. And so we serve everybody. That's the thing. We're not, we're not a supervisor who has one district. We both serve this entire city. We serve everybody in it regardless of what you look like or where you come from. And we believe in protecting everyone.
Well, she said, I agree. Can I put in one plug? Something I did mention about gun buyback. So if you have a gun that you don't need, United Players does this every year. It's the police department supports it. They usually get a couple hundred guns off the streets. It's a good thing, you know, because a lot of the guns, when we talk about gun violence, that we confiscate, that we seize in crimes, a significant amount of them are stolen. And people forget that the gun is in the nightstand or wherever it's being hidden and somebody brings them to your house and that gun is stolen and then it gets used in a crime. So gun buyback is a good thing. We try to get guns off the streets. There's way too many. Get them out of young people's hands. And if you have a gun, you get a $100 gift card, shotguns, handguns, rifles. I think you get 300 for the saw rifle, something like that. So give you a little Christmas one if you have a gun that you don't, you don't want in your house anymore.
All right, real quick before we close out, just want to say a couple of things. You know, these public safety things are important.
On May 30th, we, the city stood up what's known as the Drug Market Agency Coordination Center. So as far as the city departments that are involved in this, you know, SFPD of course, the DA, the DA's office, we have our sheriff's office, we have homeless and supportive housing, we have our Department of Emergency Management, juvenile probation, adult probation, Public Works. There's a couple others, fire and, oh, human services, A.D.C. So basically, the reason that so many of those city departments that aren't the police department, the sheriff's department are part of this is because it involves more than just criminal justice system to deal with this issue. And what we see is a lot of people that have substance abuse disorders, the people that the DA mentioned that ended up losing their lives or mainly family. They're unhoused, a lot of them, or they're here, they come here for who knows what reasons. But they come here, they end up on the streets, and then their lives are being lost sometimes. So we have to deal with all of those issues together. We just can't look at this as a criminal justice issue. So that's why the city has put all of this investment into this. We actually sit in an operations center every day, all those departments, and we problem solve, we troubleshoot. Every day, there is a mission of what we're going to work on today, where we're going to work on it, what did we do yesterday, what do we need to do for the remainder of the week? On top of that, getting to the question, the federal government is, and the state have been a huge partner on this effort. First of all, Governor Newsom back in May sent two squads, at the time, one squad of CHP officers to work in the tenement area. And they do what they do. They do a lot of traffic enforcement, a lot of those types of activities. But what we found is that has, that focus has kind of made people think twice before they come into the city to do these types of things. So that's been a big help. The other thing is the Drug Enforcement Administration or DEA, FBI, federal partners are also working with us and they're doing federal investigations. So the cases that, where people get arrested, that the DA doesn't file on the state level a lot, most of those other cases, if they get filed, are going to the federal prosecutors and they're filing those cases. I want to say this because this is very important. DA Jenkins and the new US Attorney, Ismail Ramsey, it's been the best partnership between those two offices since I've been here. And actually, from my time before I got here, it doesn't always work this way. So that's been a really So, that's been a really, really good thing for, for this city, because they coordinate, they work well together, and so you got everybody moving in the same direction. The result of that, in terms of the criminal justice piece, this time last year, we had about four hundred and, uh, just under five hundred, about four hundred and eighty-two of we arrested drug dealers. We, we're over nine hundred already this year, and we still got the rest of the month to go. And to the DA's point, as many people that are peddling fentanyl, because most of it is fentanyl, these arrests and, and these deaths, she is trying to get them detained, so they don't come back in our city and do this. And this affects all of us, whether we, whether we see it directly, feel it directly or not, because how it affects this community and policing is, we have to put so many resources to deal with that problem, it makes it difficult to do other things in the rest of the city, so it affects all of us. And then the other side of that is the, the aftermath, you know, like I said, when the consequences of how this is destroying families and communities, I don't know how many of you have seen the effects, the physical effects of fentanyl, where people are pumped over, they can't even stand up. You see that all over our city, including this area.
Yeah.
So, we have a lot of work to do, and the reason that we're starting in the Teneron is that is really where the epicenter of where this problem is. So, the arrests are happening, but the other part, for those of you, uh, that's San Francisco, we've been doing what was called Homer Bound. This is a program where when people come here, uh, they lose their way in up on the streets, the city will give them the resources to get back to where they have support, where, you know, their homes. So, we've kind of, we figured that, the city, we, the city, and we have a, a journey home version of that now, to make it a little bit easier to get people back home. It just really got reconfigured within the last month or so where we've been doing this, but the success rate has been good, as, uh, I think what was reported to us last week, out of the first twelve people that were offered, at least ten or eleven decided to go back home. And it's not like we're trying to dump people on the doorsteps, like it hasn't been done to us, cause we know that other cities have dropped people off in San Francisco, and they end up on the street. That's not what this is about. This is honestly about giving people the resources to get back to their support network, so they have some help to get over whatever it is they got down in this position, so that's a very promising thing. The other thing is, it's not just policing, we're trying to get people connected to services. So, working with the service providers, you know, there's a new, not new penalty, uh, October fourth, Code Teneron, there's an organization, a nonprofit, with outreach workers that go out, they don't mind working with us, and try to get people off the streets and to shelter, and to a place where they can get some help, rather than going to jail. Now, that's what we prefer, that doesn't work for everybody. And when we started back really arresting people who were using drugs in the public, it got met with some disapproval and controversy. You may feel a different way about it, but the way I feel and the way we feel is that we have to do that, because our city had gotten out of control with just open air drug uses all over the city. People using fentanyl, meth, shooting up, you go to the playground, you got needles in the playground, it's just, you know, that, we can't have that. So, there has to be some accountability there, too. So, that's the other part of how we're trying to address this, we're trying to address the demand, because anytime you have a demand, you're gonna have a supply, and people will be willing to make the money, and you gotta address both sides. So, short answer, it's going really well, and we're gonna keep doing it. So, that's gonna be an investment that we're gonna keep doing.
Alright, thank you, Chief Scott, for that question. Now, we'll get to the meat and potatoes. We here in D-ten, we'll talk about some of the issues that's impacting D-ten. For all of you to receive cards, let me know, raise your hand when you get your cards ready. So, we still have a couple more questions for the local, uh, issues here in D-ten that Chief Scott and DA Jenkins will be tackling, and then we'll be getting close to getting you guys questions off the, uh, the cards here. So, give us one second, ladies, once it's ready. So, the first question for DA Jenkins, for, you know, you talked about earlier about Bayview being, District Ten being the high, uh, crime area, victims, um, what services are available through your office for victims and witnesses of crimes? And are victims with past criminal record eligible, eligible for victim services?
Yes, so we have a very robust victim services division, and you see some of them right outside with a table, um, tonight, making sure that they're getting some of our information out, uh, to you all, but essentially, they, they are here to help whether we have filed a case for, for the crime that affected you or not. Uh, it doesn't, for us to help from a victim services standpoint, it doesn't require that an arrest be made of the suspect, it doesn't require that we file charges, um, it simply requires that you are the victim of a crime. And, uh, particularly, if you're the victim of a violent crime, uh, there may be additional resources that are available to you from the state. And so, our victim advocates, we have some that of course work with victims who have cases in our office, but also there's a group that work with people who don't have cases in our office, but like I said, have been the victims of crime. Um, and they are there to really sort of walk you through the process of what paper, if, to find out, are you eligible for victim compensation from the state, and what you are eligible for, and really hold your hand through the process of filling out the forms necessary to try to get that compensation. One of the big things that's available to victims right now that generally is not as taken advantage of is mental health resources. Uh, so many of us sort of forget that part of it, that we've been traumatized, uh, even if you weren't the direct victim, if a family member was next to you when that happened, if your child was present and saw something happen, they have been affected by that. And so, there are mental health resources available that my office can connect folks to, um, where there are resources to pay for that, uh, mental health, uh, assistance, uh, but I think it's something that we've got to do a lot more of. I think we expect certainly after shoot, when I think of shootings, imagine the children that are expected to get up and go to school the next day, as though that didn't happen, right? They've been traumatized, and so we wonder why they're not able to then go to school and perform the way we want them to perform. And so, we've got to do better about linking folks to those resources, um, and my office is one that can be of assistance in that area.
Alright, thank you for that response, uh, DA Jenkins. Um, we are breezing through the, uh, cards, uh, just wanna say, a lot of you great questions, and a lot of them are going to get, uh, answered as we come through the next couple of questions, so it's pretty good that we're spot on with, what's going on here in D-ten. Alright, with that being said, Chief Scott, um, talk about how do you support the local merchants that's battling against break-ins, vandalism, violent behavior, shoplifting? Uh, what are you doing to ensure SFPD resources aren't being taken away from the Bayview neighborhood?
So, the, um, the retail theft issue in the city is, is challenging, and even though statistically, we, we're doing better, you know, we have less reported thefts than we had this time last year, and it's a pretty significant number that we've gone down, it's still way too high. And a lot of, um, to, to the point of the question, you know, San Francisco is a, is a commu, is a series of communities, and I have to tell you in the room that the city thrives on community, family, mom and pop type of businesses. Now, what gets most of the headlines is what we saw, what we continue to see all over the country, when somebody runs into some store like Nordstrom's or whatever, and twenty or thirty people running there, and everybody's got an armful of something, and they're running out. That's what gets the headlines, but that's not the day-to-day thing that we're dealing with. We're dealing with communities, small stores, Walgreens, or Community Walgreens, Safeway, whatever, you know, that, that's a daily thing. So, how we're trying to deal with that is, um, a couple of things. Number one, a lot of this comes back to staffing, so we've increased the staffing, our, our burglary investigators have investigated these crimes. We also, thank goodness, got help from the state, we just got granted a fifteen point three million dollars, at least the Police Department organized retail theft grant, and then the DA's got a couple million, two million, two point something million as well, so that's a huge, huge thing for us, because it does a number of things. For us, we're gonna be able to, to have more personnel money, whether it be overtime, we're gonna be able to handle some, uh, or hire, rather, some non-forn people like analysts and stuff to do a lot of the administrative work, the, the analyst work that needs to be done for this problem, and it allows us to buy equipment. Now, we're coming this year, uh, they're gonna be, I think, in total about four hundred cameras, and they'll be placed all around the city, and they're gonna have license plate readers in the building. It's not a burglar rises, the Texaco over there. We gotta, I mean, picture the license plates, but picture the car. And right now, we don't have that. And I'll tell you how important it is, you know, I, I, some of you may have heard me say this, you know, a couple of days ago last week, they had a series of murders down in Southern California and LA, where somebody was just executing homeless people. I think he killed three people, and then robbed another guy, and killed him. The way they caught that man was the very technology that I'm talking about. He was driving through Beverly Hills, and they got all these cameras and license plate readers, picked up his plate, they hit officers where he could locate him pretty quickly, and they got him and his gun, and he was using X, Y, and Z custody, so that's the potential of this type of technology. And, and a time where we have five hundred officers less than we are supposed to have, or we need to have anyway, we need assistance like that. So, this brand gave us the ability to do that. The other thing that we're doing, and we're doing this all over the city, for about the last, probably over a year, a little over a year, we've been doing what we call blitz operation, and that is putting San Francisco police officers into these retail stores, big stores and small stores, and they wait on somebody to come in, use these more than one person, and then when they try to steal, and they go out of store improperly, we arrest them. We've been very successful, we've arrested over three hundred people. Yeah, just arrested seven in, in a, in a store at, I think, Oakland, California this past week. So, these operations have been successful, but there's a point to all of this, it's not just about the numbers. We want people, when they go into your local Walgreens and do those types of things, to think, "I might get caught." The Walgreens right across the street shut down, you all know this, the one on Williams was about to shut down, and, and we, some people in this room sat out in Walgreens and says, "We'll do whatever we can, keep the store open." Because if that store's not open, you gotta go quite a ways to get to your pharmacy and all that stuff. So, it's really important that we don't just spend our resources in, you know, at Stones Town or Union Square, we also have to use this grant money and the, and the resources we already have to protect, like the Walgreens and Williams. The reason that they stayed is we worked with them, and things got better. So, we are committed not only to the high, you know, the high, not to have the high-profile stores, we're also committed to communities like this to make sure that we can have a lucky in the Bayview. That store has had some death problems, too, and thanks to our Bayview officers, you know, we've been able to keep it in check, but we still have a lot of work to do, so if we wanna have the things that we wanna have, you know, we gotta work together to make sure that these businesses can survive. A lot of it is policing, but we need you to work with us, too. The one thing, other thing I'll say is, um, the people that are doing this, some of them are from San Francisco, some of them are from elsewhere, it's kind of a mixed, mixed bag, but getting to accountability, and I wanna reemphasize what the DA's said, DA Jenkins said, this city has a set of values that probably is unlike any other city, but we still have to have order in our city, we still have to have accountability in our city. We can be as compassionate as anybody else, and I think we are, but when our stores get run out of town because we can't control shoplifting and death, that's bad for all of us.
It is.
You know, I think it is lucky for Colle Greens, so, you know, cause I don't live part of here, so, you know, it's nice to be able to shop in places near where you live and not have to drive across the town, because we can't keep the store open, because they can't afford to stay open. So, I say that we all have a vested interest to make sure that we do what we can to do this, and we're gonna do our part, but that retail theft grant is gonna be a big part of it, and some of the tactics that we were using have been successful, so that's, I believe, why things are starting to go in.
I just wanna add one thing real quick, which is, I had an employee tell me, you know, remind me that Wal, pharmacies like Walgreens are, are some of the only ones that accept Medi-Cal and Medicare, right? So, when you're talking about, you know, I've had people tell me, "Oh, you just care about these chains and these corporations," and it's like, no, it's like what you said, these are stores that we need in our communities for certain reasons, that they can provide some things, some goods and some services, that we can't necessarily go everywhere to get. And so, that is why I think we're having to very much prioritize making sure that we're able to keep these stores here, right? We wanna make sure that our communities have the same things that others do. How many of us are sick and tired of having to go across town to get, to go to a nice coffee shop, or this, or that? That shouldn't be the case. And so, we are, we are really trying to make sure, um, that we invest, uh, our resources in our communities so that they can stay. Um, I recently did a, a merchant walk, um, here in the Bayview, with the captain of, of Bayview Station and some, some of the foot patrol officers, going in and talking to the small business owners. How is it for you? What's going on? What are the, what are the problems that you're experiencing? How can we do more to support you? And that, I, they had been asking for us to do that for a while, um, and we made that happen, and so that's what we've got to do, is come and get beyond the ground to make sure we're supporting the businesses that are here and invested in, in this community so that they can stay.
Alright.
And Jenny, can I, and nothing, we're gonna keep you on the clock.
One more minute, Chief Scott, we keep you on the clock, Mike, go ahead, Chief Scott.
To a point, the merchant walk just flagged on for me, because I've done the same thing Third Street, and it, there was a really bad burglary problem at that time, this was a year ago, but Bayview is, we instituted the Third Street Footbeat, and I think they're on bikes sometimes, makes a world of difference. So, bottom line is, in the Bayview, burglaries are down like twenty-eight, almost thirty percent. So, like I said, these are statistics that may not mean anything to you, because we know, we, we know that if you get victimized, you probably don't care how much stuff is up or down, it's like it happened to you, and it hurts. But we do have to track these things, and, you know, things like the foot beat and all the things that we're doing, uh, we gotta keep on doing, cause we wanna continue to lessen the victimization in this community, in every community, but particularly this community, because those businesses were really hurt when we did our merchant walk, and we did commit to making sure that we did whatever we can to start to make things turn around. So, if it's turning around, we're gonna try to keep going in that direction.
That's, that's, uh, very important, you know, like they said, the banks, we also gotta be mindful of our seniors, descriptions, we have these issues that impact, they have to go really far, and it's hard to get loans, different things that we hear, and so it's very important on that they continue to tackle that, and make sure that's impacted. But with transparency, we'll stay on time, we'll hold you guys a couple min, minutes on these, cause we wanna get out of here on time, and we wanna make sure that everybody's heard, and I just wanna be, uh, accountable. One of the questions is, how can you help us address overdose, uh, and trafficking in RV encampments in industrial Bayview? How could you help to address encampment issues such as human waste and car thefts and illegal dumping areas, and then how could we collaborate as a community?
You know, I'll take the camp one. Just, I'm gonna call it in, again, call it in. The process for encampments, homeless and supportive housing, they, they have a chart, and when you call in an encampment, it goes on the list, and it's really kind of, they get to them one at a time, but then they call all the resources they need to resolve an encampment. And the RVs are a little bit more challenging, cause there's, we gotta get, uh, DPT involved, the, the parking folks involved, but it can be resolved, so call it in, because if it doesn't go on that list, it's probably not gonna get addressed, so you can call 311, or you can do it on your phone. What's really good, because they will get, the city will get back to you, if you have a cell phone, take a picture of it and send it, and do 311, you can put the actual picture of the problem, and then they will track it, and you, and they will let you know when it's resolved, so that way you'll get the feedback. If you don't call 311, you can call the non-mercy number, SFPD, four one five, five five three zero one two three, and then they'll rock that call, four one five, five five three zero one two three, or 311 is easier. Take a picture of it, send it in, it will get resolved. I do it all the time, when I'm off duty, and I see something, I'll call it in. It, it's not overnight all the time, but they do get back to you when you do that, so that's how you resolve that.
And the more of you that do that, right, on a single encampment, the more they see, "Wait, wait, wait, we've got a significant problem here." So, we need the volume of people, right, reporting the same things.
One quick question, uh, someone wrote, uh, what are the rules of people sleeping or living in their cars, vehicles overnight, uh, they want them off their streets, what can you all do about that?
That's a stubborn problem for us, yeah. It's, there are sections, policemen, there's a couple sections about overnight camping in cars. It's, it's a little tricky, um, you know, marked vehicles, sometimes people move the car, or the, the mo- mo, cross on the other side of the street, and they, you know, they play those games, so it's not as easy as it might seem to do that, and it is a problem in the city, all over the city. We have in Bayview, you go to Candlestick, go Candlestick Park, and it's, it's a huge problem, so it's, it's all over. So, it's, it's all over this community, under the freeways. Call it in because we do work with DPT and the Homeless and Supportive Housing Department to, to do exactly what I described. Some of these things are kind of long-term projects. At the end of the day, we try to get people in a, in a place where they can live somewhere legally and not be parked in front of people's house, houses. But it's a problem and it's a little tricky. So, it's not gonna be an overnight solution. Call it in, 311 is the best way to do that. If, you know, get on the list and then say you'll get to it. And a lot of times, we work as a team.
Couple of questions that was on this card, a lot of us answered. Do you have reprograms to help you? They discussed that, a number of programs. How can we help? We've talked about how to engage and connect. The last question, I'm not sure, but it says, "If you know someone that is seeking justice, seeing justice, how can you make an impact on sentencing?" I think that's a question of DA. I'm not for sure. If somebody, I guess if somebody's in the justice system, how do you make an impact on sentencing?
So, it, it depends on which vantage point you're talking about. So, if it's from a victim's standpoint, then of course, folks who are interested or are involved in that case or associated with the case can call our office. We will have somebody, you know, whoever's handling that case, of course, take your call and, and, and listen to you. They can't discuss, obviously, the, the inner workings of a case with people who are not actually associated with it, but they can take your, your feedback. Also, it depending on the situation, you can come to court and express that sentiment to the judge. And victims of crime and the public have a right to be heard at the time of sentencing and you can come in and tell the court what your position is, whether you think it's too lenient or too harsh, or whatever you want the court to know. If you are talking about wanting to impact from, you know, being connected to a defendant, you have the same rights. You can, you can call in, you can express that sentiment to our attorneys. I am big on making sure that, again, we don't just serve one side of, of the system, we serve the people. And so, that means we have to, we have to take into account everybody's needs and opinions. And I, the way I've done this job, my career, is to make sure that I do make myself available, even to the defendant's family, so that they are heard as well. You also, as a defendant's family member or community member, have the right to express your feelings to the court as well. Oftentimes, most commonly, people write letters and they submit it to our office or to the public defender so that they can provide that to the court. But you're also welcome to come in and give that, that impact statement in court, in person.
Thank you. We have five questions left and we have five minutes before we have to go. This is gonna be quick. We doing pretty good tonight. I don't know what they said, but baby, we on time, people. All right. Both in form or form ways to share, give grievances about services. Petrelli Hill Public Housing, can you investigate dissemination of San Francisco Housing Authority on the South Side housing residents? Something about grievances.
Is this about public housing grievances?
Yeah, I believe so. San Francisco Housing Authority for folks on the South Side of the house, for housing residents.
What I can say, I don't really have to answer that except for you make sure you contact the housing authority if you have a problem with housing authority. But for almost seven years, have a meeting with residents of Petrelli every, every first Monday of the month. And for those of you who know Azuri, she's green, she's been coordinating those meetings for us. We've been doing it since, since I got here, really. Since I got appointed to this position. And we, and those meetings still happen. Sometimes, depending on what the topic of the day, they're well-attended and sometimes only a few people. But if you know Azuri, get in touch with her because we, every first of the month, first Monday of the month, we have those meetings at 5:30, 5:00. So, those are ongoing and I bring this up because housing, at times, we brought the housing authority folks in to answer those type of questions. And so, that's an avenue, if you wanna do it with us or through us to do it, but I encourage whoever asks a question to get in contact with the housing authority.
I, I read it and it's, can you investigate the purposeful discrimination by the San Francisco Housing Authority, basically on this side of town? That, I would, I would probably say go to the city attorney. If there, if, if the city can prove a pattern and practice of discrimination, and I've, I've actually been hearing this from people all around, then I think they would have the ability to do something about it. And so, that's what I would recommend is, is place in a phone call to the city attorney's office. They might be in a better position to address this because it's simple.
All right. All right, Chief Scott, get busy. We wrap it up, get close. Couple more questions. Chief Scott talked about earlier about surveillance. We have a question. I'm gonna let the Chief Scott finish.
All right, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I know you're busy, man. We gotta, we got a couple of questions about surveillance. Couple of things. I know AB 645, speed safety initiative is going effect after the new year about around schools, things of that nature. Is that in effect for the city yet as it went through? Is there proposed measures on it? Can you educate the community about what it might be or could be with the street, the street traffic light?
Speed cameras?
Ones that can give you tickets without a permit?
The speed cameras, the speed lights, so there's, I don't think speed cameras is...
Well, AB, well, I know it's AB 645.
Yeah, so, so the speed, the traffic cameras right now is for running red lights. Now, there's legislation that I don't know if it's going through, I don't know, for speeding.
I believe it went through. I don't know if the police commission approved it yet, but I know they said San Francisco opened it on Saturday. Around schools, I believe it said.
I'll follow up in a minute because I know the, the city's position was, we were in favor and still are, and that's the picture city position. And the way it's designed is this, it's the speed cameras. If you exceed, you know, speed limit, then it'll capture your license plate and all that and you get a ticket in the mail. So, we already have that for red lights in certain parts of the city. So, I, I'll have to follow up on that and I'll get the information to whoever, if we can get the, an email address for that car.
And then, another question about cameras. Who watches over the cameras for the city? SFPD put around District 10, or I guess we could say City Y. Do the police use the cameras to investigate crimes? Does anyone else's side SFPD watches the camera? If so, who? How many crimes being investigated as far as CT scams and SFPD? Are, are they watching the cameras?
Yeah, so as far as the surveillance cameras, there's a couple of, couple of, this is a complicated thing in, in San Francisco. The SFPD at this point does not have cameras like in, out in the city. Couple of things with that, there are different city departments that have cameras, MTA. Some of the public buildings have, and we have cameras at our police stations. So, those we can monitor anytime, or at least our cameras at the police stations, we can monitor anytime. There was an ordinance about a year ago, and I'll make this quick, that was approved in October last year and Board of Supervisors changed their surveillance camera policy where we can request to have access to private party cameras. There's a whole process that our officers have to go through. It has to be approved, it has to be related to a crime or that has happened or is likely to happen or whatever. We have to have enough to say, "We need to watch this camera to prevent a crime or to solve a crime." So, that got passed in October. We got it through the commission. We started using cameras in that fashion in about April of this year. And we use them wherever we need to use them. We use them a lot in the tenement for the drug dealer, the drug market issue. We've used them for retail stores. We've used them in other situations when we either know a crime is gonna occur because of whatever information we have, or we always could, you go back and get the video after the fact. But what we wanted to do, and finally we have the ability to do this in, in a limited way, is be able to, when we need to watch a camera, even a private camera, if the owner gives us permission, to watch it either while the crime is happening or before the crime is happening. So, now we do have the ability to do that, but these are private cameras. So, we don't own the, unless we get permission from the owner, we don't own that technology. If we get permission to use it, we use it. Now, we can get the footage, but like if officer, we all have cell phones, we can't videotape this stuff, that we have to get the footage from the, the person that owns the cameras. So, that's, that's how we do it. It's private. With private cameras, we don't control it. Some business districts like Union Square, they have a whole set of cameras in Union Square. We have to get permission for them. Now, if we get the, when we get the cameras that I talked about earlier, the, the 400 cameras, those we will have access to. So, those won't be private cameras. Those will be owned by the city. And then, there's, there's other stuff on the table that if it develops and if it goes through, then we'll probably have more access to cameras, but that's not, we're not there yet.
Local community, we have two minutes left. We haven't got a lot of minutes. I wanted to bring some help in.
Today was a great town hall meeting, just to see community folks come out to talk about some of the issues that impact our community here in D-10, as well as community issues that's impacting the city of San Francisco. It is important that our community comes together and continue to have conversations, to have dialogue with our police department and the district attorney's office. We know over the past years, there's been ups and downs and difficulties in building community relationship and this is another attempt to continue to work together to tackle the issues that impact the residents of the city, also the folks here in D-10. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. There's a lot of issues of concern that has been brought up. The commitment from our leadership, from Police Chief Scott and from District Attorney, DA Brooke Jenkins, there's a commitment to make change, commit to make resources to help impact the community. One day at a time it takes as we approach these holiday seasons, we just wanna continue to uplift positivity, uplift the opportunities to work together, to really come together and make change in our community as we continue to uplift the voices of the community and continue to work together to change the narrative. Tonight, D-10 showed up. It was a very profound meeting. Folks really expressed their concerns in a way that we love to represent and show up. It was a great meeting, great to see all of the community folks. These are the building blocks, the pieces to the puzzle to continue to build. There's a lot of work, there's a lot of challenges, there's a lot of obstacles. It's not gonna be easy, but as soon as we can come together and as soon as we can make the commitment to at least have the conversation, have the dialogue, the difficult conversation, things could start to break through. We're not gonna say all of the fixes are gonna happen overnight, but with commitment, consistency and transparency, we could work together to make a better D-10 and a better San Francisco for our residents when we talk about public safety.